I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we do have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cell phones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. Moving on to 4.0 presentation. Tonight, we have the Summer School 2024 presentation with the elementary principal Jenna Lutteiri, middle school principal Alexis Matee, high school principal Chris Pollard, and E S Y Summers Program Janine Suter and Matthew Heim.
Hello, everybody. Before I do that one, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jenna Lutteiri. I teach kindergarten at Como Park. I'm also the elementary summer school principal. I'm also a modified field hockey coach. So if I look a little sweaty, it's because I just came from our game. And we were getting our butts kicked, so I'm very happy to be here and not there and stuff. But I'll talk a little bit about our summer program. Before I get into that, though, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who makes our program come together in the summer. And so definitely a team effort. A big shout out to our secretaries in the beginning of our program. While parents don't know exactly where drop off or pickup is, so they are very, very helpful in getting them to the right place. And a big shout out to our administrators, Jackie Gold, for letting us use William Street School. A lot of times, we're split into two different buildings. But luckily, the last couple of years, we've been at William Street School. And it's really nice to all be together in one building. But thank you to everyone who helps our program come together. So our theme for our program this summer was Reading Takes Us to Infinity and Beyond. So I'll talk a little bit about that in just a second. But I'm a big Disney nerd, and there was a push for a science of reading this year. So I thought it was a perfect theme for our program. All right, so our program this summer had 15 amazing teachers. We had 13 special or general education teachers and two special education teachers, and 147 students. That is the most, the most students that we've had since I've taken over the program, I think, five years ago. And it might be the most that we've ever had in our summer program. So our summer program continues to grow. We both have teacher referrals at the end of the school year, and we have parent requests of students that just want to join our program. So I'm very, very excited to see it growing every summer. Back to our teachers. So like I said, we have a big emphasis on project-based learning this year, as well as the science of reading. So a big emphasis on literacy and math skills throughout our program. And luckily, we're able to keep, our class size is pretty small. We have a lot of teachers, so able to keep it at about 13 students per class size. All right, so through our theme this year, Reading Takes Us to Infinity and Beyond, we have our project-based learning. And we're able to embed social studies and science into that project, which is presented to parents on the last day. It's a comment of our culminating project presented to parents on the very last day of our program. We also have teachers that are incorporating technology, team teaching. And I wanted to talk a little bit about our, the special ed side of things. So although our program was a general education program, we were very, very lucky to have a co-teaching model, as well as special ed teachers are pushing in and pulling out through our program. So you can see that we're servicing a wide range of students throughout our district. All right, so here's the fun stuff. So this year, our reading incentive was every Thursday, the kids would wear white to look like an astronaut. And then throughout the week, they had a reading log that went home. And however many books they read that week, they got that many "Out of This World" stickers. So they have these star stickers throughout their entire bodies. And then they went home and got to tell their parents, "Look at all the books that I've read." So that was a really awesome motivator. And then every Thursday, we also give them Freezy Pops because it's summer, and we try to keep it a little bit of fun. But they're very motivated and excited to be on our program, as you could see and see here. So some of our examples of our project-based learning. I have Ms. Hagan and Mrs. Curtin. They used a project where they were using shapes in their first grade classroom to create toys from Toy Story. And then that's what they presented to parents on the last day. And then in Ms. Ruber's fourth grade classroom, they were designing rocket ships and kind of creating a space exploration to Mars. So it was awesome walking into her classroom, and the kids were like, "Oh, what are we gonna do if there's no water? How are we gonna problem solve this?" So really awesome seeing those problem-solving skills happening in our classrooms. All right, and one last thing I wanted to talk about was our extended day program. So this is our third year doing our enrichment courses. And parents are really, really excited about these courses. They're offering to any of our students who want to just join in for a little boost throughout the summer. But we had three amazing programs that were offered. We had Art Stories with Mrs. Thomas Lopolo, Stan with Mrs. Shepanovsky, and Writing with Mrs. Payne. And now I'll pass it over to Alexis.
Hi, everybody. Ooh, a little taller. Hi, everybody. My name is Lexi McTag. I'm currently a seventh grade ELA teacher at the middle school. And this summer, I was blessed with the opportunity to be the middle school summer school principal. So a couple of things I wanted to talk about was our staff came together and really created an incredible project-based learning approach to get these students re-engaged with the school structure, the school model, that maybe they weren't super in tune with throughout the year. So our program, we had about 15 students register. All of our students were either recommended by a teacher, a counselor, or voluntarily enrolled. Maybe their parents weren't too pleased with their grades, and they decided to have them enroll. We accepted all students, no matter whether they were teacher recommendation or family chose to enroll them. All the students took all six of the courses listed up there, including a Genius Hour where they worked on the project that they set out to complete with their core teachers. So our program goals were to engage the students in project-based learning to help them retain information that they may have missed throughout the school year. We wanted to encourage students to create a meaningful project that they were proud of to present. We also invited the parents to come in and take a look at these projects at the end of the summer. And we had a pretty good turnout for that with siblings coming in too, to see what their siblings worked on throughout the summer. We wanted to review important vocab and school expectations before beginning a new school year. And something that we noticed at the end was we had multiple students tell us, "I wish regular school was like summer school." So it did the purpose of re-engaging. And we reached that goal of making sure that they understood the things they needed to do to be successful and to be meaningful. So that way, they would be engaged for this school year and hopefully not have to do summer school next year. One of our last goals was to teach social emotional skills to help regulate emotions and set students up with a plan to do better next year. I know I don't see all of the middle school students because some of them went up to the high school. But the ones who are in eighth grade now already have a better attendance. And some of them have rapport with teachers that they would have never had rapport in that way last year. Some positive highlights. All of our students passed the program and were engaged throughout the project creation process. Students were given opportunities to learn in a different way than during the traditional school year. And students were given opportunities they might not otherwise have access to, such as the two field trips that we went on. So our first field trip was to the Niagara Aquarium. How this tied into their project was they were creating a Minecraft world. So based on the things that they learned at the aquarium, they were then able to incorporate that into their world, into their aquatic part of their world, if they chose to, in a way that was realistic. We also took a field trip to explore Buffalo Incorporated. And we were able to have Ms. Bonnie Blatner come meet us because she is a volunteer docent there. So they were able to learn about the history of Buffalo and also a lot of different architecture things that played into their project. So again, they could create in their Minecraft world in a meaningful and real way. Then, like Jenna said, this was our third year running the Afternoon Enrichment Program. Our first one that we did for the seven through 12 students was Geo Metro City with Rita Gregory and Meg Smith. So they used different aspects of geometry to create a world. And this ran for two weeks. We had about five kids for each week of this program. We also did game-based learning with Minecraft, and that was with Mr. Ted Fuqua. We had some of these kids who signed up for the Minecraft course in Week One that ended up staying for all four weeks because they had such a good time creating and playing with people in the room instead of just playing Minecraft alone at home or with people online. We also had mindfulness with Mr. Rob Gross, where he talked a lot about social emotional regulation, which was really helpful for some students who were coming into seventh grade because they not only got to learn how to socially emotionally regulate themselves, but also learn the building layout a little bit, which relieved their anxiety coming into a new space. Live Like a Legend with Callan Frye and Michael Corrigan in the weight room. So we had a lot of the football players sign up for this one. And it was just a space where they could work out and train for the upcoming season. And then Explore Yourself and Building Community with Me and Elevate Happiness with Ms. Selena Malik. All of these students who signed up got to participate in water balloons, walks to Frosties, different energizers, different games. It was a way to just bring people together and socialize them, which a lot of them had missed out on in the past. So they were able to form different friendships. A lot of them exchanged numbers and stayed in touch even after the course was over. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Chris Pollard. Thank you.
All right, so my name is Chris Pollard. I'm a math teacher at the high school. I've been doing that for, this is my 17th year. And for 12 of those years, I've done the summer school program. But this is the very first year that I've kind of graduated up to principal of the program. And I never thought or envisioned myself doing anything like that. So a lot of what I'm gonna talk about are just a lot of thank yous for the support that I got through that process. So here's some thank yous right away. Not only was this a terrific staff, a mix of some fresh faces, first-year teachers, but also some veterans. I specifically want to thank Travis Pitzanka, Kathy Orbatas. With all the different students we had that were there to take exams, but also take classes, there's a lot of students that needed special ed services, that needed accommodations for tests for the Regents exams. And I couldn't have sorted all that out without them, so a big thank you to them. Also on top of that, Danielle Len is a guidance counselor at the high school. Not only did she push into classes for the social emotional aspect of things, but she also was right there by my side figuring out the scheduling portions of it. Again, making sure students were in the right classes, taking the right exams. I couldn't have been able to set all that up without her. And then the heartbeat, really, of our whole program, which is Michelle, Michelle Dasinski. She's the clerk and the clerical staff that we had. And she not only was doing all the little things to help me out in the office, but she's also just, you know, the smiling face that all the students saw. And all the students got along with and look forward to seeing her. So a big, big plus to our program. So the program goal goes for the high schools. Number one, they're getting credit recovery. So if a student failed a particular class, they were trying to get that recovery back. But also, at the same time, if they failed an exam, they could also prepare for the exam through the classes. But we were also able to offer in the last week of summer school exam, a mini prep so students who didn't fail the course, but failed an exam or needed to get a better score on exam or wanted to get a better score, they had the opportunity of attending the class for that exam during the last week of school. So we had 41 students that registered for classes. Seventeen of them were ninth graders looking to get recovery for their classes. Eleven of them were 10th graders, and 13 of them were 11th graders trying to, you know, get that recovery back to put them in a good place for next semester and next year. The courses that we offered, we offered ELA of all the different varieties of freshman level, sophomore, junior, and senior. We were able to offer Algebra I and Geometry. Not listed up there as Algebra II, but we were able to offer an exam preview for Algebra II during the last week of school. We also did Global. There was a student who was in there for Global II, but was able to get credit recovery for one of our computer programs, U.S. History, Earth Science and Living Environment, Physical Education. And we were also able to give that social emotional learning aspect as well. Of the 41 students that enrolled, every single one of them got credit for their courses. There were some students that took more than one class, which is why we had 52 classes and 52 credits earned from that. So some of the students were able to earn more than one credit. Of all the students that took exams, 45 of them were able to get Regents credit for that. And every single lab student who attended summer school did earn credit for their classes. And that lab program is our alternative program at the high school. Also included in our program, which I didn't get to see much of because it was located at the high school where we were at the middle school, is Police Academy and Chip Forensics, which is run by us and Lancaster PD, but also Chip Trapper. So it's a two-week program, intensive junior police academy program. And all the topics that you see there were topics that were part of it. Again, can't speak much to it because I didn't get to see it with my own eyes, but it's always been a very successful program. And then here's some pictures of that. And then big thank yous to a lot of you who are sitting here in this room. So thank you to Dr. Valley, Dr. Kufel, the Board of Education, for the whole program that we run. Some specific thank yous. Thank you to Andy Crasman and who I was on the phone with every single day and emailing with. So he probably got sick of my requests and everything that I needed. But I thank you very much for all the support you gave me. Michelle Ziegler and especially Cheryl Randall. She was able to help me with the registering of students. And I was constantly meeting with her through Google Meets to help with that. Especially John Athemus, I want to give a big thank you to. He's the coordinator of the lab program. And he was constantly stopping in, even though he didn't have to, to check on his lab students. And it really helped trying, you know, get some of them who maybe didn't have the best attendance to get there to show up and get those credits that every student did end up getting. Thank you to Michelle Randa for helping us through payroll stuff. It's something that I never had to go through before, so that was a big help. Jamie Erdl, one of my biggest things that I had to do through this program was not only just schedule the exams, but we have so many more E N L students that we've never had before. So trying to order and schedule exams for different languages or students that couldn't necessarily get their exam in the language that we needed, but had to schedule interpreters for them. So that was something that I, you know, signing up for the program, never thought I would have to do. And I couldn't have done that without her. And Jamie Parnik, who's always in charge of the exam stuff at the high school, was able to coach me through the process as well. Thank you to Mrs. Lackey, Mr. Tresman, Kelly Jensen, all the administrators and clerical staff at the middle school, making things easy when I needed a room or I needed things moved. And all the other custodial staff making things easy for me as well and always wanting to buy me if they needed to clean something and check it with me first. So thank you to everybody. It really did run well. And I kind of took the compliments that other people gave me as a sign that things went well. And we got nothing but compliments. So I was proud of what came out in the end.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to take a few minutes to share about our extended school year program. I'm Janine Suter, and this is Matthew Heim. He was the teacher, and I was the program coordinator. We were given the opportunity to work together for the past two summers. This year, we did welcome two new aides to our program, Rachel Mandell and Rebecca Young. We also welcomed a new speech teacher for the summer. Her name is Heather Syracuse. We'd also like to thank the many people that contribute to the success of our summer program. So John and Erin are instrumental in helping us provide opportunities for our students. Mary Jo Dunkle is the Director of Special Education at Clarence because we do combine both Lancaster students and Clarence students into our program. Mrs. Lackey welcomed us to the middle school. And then we have the Salvatore family here because we did work at The Garden Place, which is where we work on job skills. And new this year, we'd like to thank Mike Neber. He works at the Angry Buffalo, and he also allowed us to work there this summer. So next, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the program. The goal of our program is to help limit regression for our special ed students that they might experience over the summer. We focus on job skills that relate to their CEDAS and achievement credentials, as well as their social skills and daily living skills. We cooked every week, which provided opportunities for the students to work with different kitchen tools. They had to work together and follow a recipe. And actually, Matt has two of our cookbooks slash memory books that the students all received a copy of this summer. We, like I said previously, we were able to host our own students and Clarence students. And this summer, when we worked at The Garden Place Hotel, we worked in the laundry room, and we folded towels and sheets. We collected laundry. And then new this year was the Angry Buffalo at the Rose Garden. And there, we also participated in life skills such as vacuuming, sweeping, preparing for the afternoon crowd to come in. Our framework for the program is that we do two days of academics. And again, we are working on limiting regression. We are two days at our job site and one community outing per week.
So I'd like to talk a little bit more about some of the job sites that we did work at this summer as well. So some of the tasks of the program of a program of this nature is to really focus on tasks that are going to be repetitive in nature, to allow students to be able to master these tasks independently. So as Janine had said previously, this year, we returned to The Garden Place Hotel to build upon some of the skills that we laid last year. Some of the different tasks that we did, including laundry, including the collection and laundering of linens. And that would be stripping the hotel beds, collecting the linens, separating wash and folding, as well as restocking and vacuuming the common areas as well. We were super excited to add a new job site this year over at the Angry Buffalo as well. They have worked with our regular school year programs for the last few years. And they will allow us to come in and join them for the summer program as well. Here, we really focused on providing and maintaining a welcoming environment for the guests, as well as repurposing the restaurant for their patrons, such as tasks like vacuuming, the common areas, sanitizing tables and chairs, sweeping, mopping, and rolling silverware. In addition, with our community outings, we were able to take six of them this year as well. So some of these would include the Aurora Movie Theater, the Lions Club Annual Picnic, the Buffalo Museum of Science, the Beaver Island State Parks, where we're able to go and absorb some different nature out on our walk. We're also able to go visit a working farm over at Keltenberg Farms and then stop in for some fun to round out the year at Adventure Land and for some mini golf. Would also like to thank all the different groups of people who do make this program possible every year. Dr. Valley, Dr. Kufel, the Board of Ed, and the entire community. Stephanie Lackey, who is the middle school principal, who allowed us to come in, as well as our Assistant Director and Director of Special Education. The custodial staff over at the middle school is fantastic. And we really made sure that we had a welcoming environment all year. And then, of course, the Salvatore family and Mike and Jen from the Angry Buffalo. Thank you.
All right. A huge thank you to all of our presenters this evening, as well as every single staff member and educator that helped out through the summer. When you think about it as a whole, right? When you talk about graduation rate or, you know, how well the students are doing, it's a huge feat that these educators are really honing in on. But then, you know, as I was thinking, like, when you think about each individual child that they're affecting, that's a real big win for me. So again, thank you all so much. All right, moving on to 5.0 correspondence. 5.1, we did receive one email for record. 6.0, approval of minutes. 6.1, can I have a motion on the regular session from August 26, 2024? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 7.0, items from staff organizations? Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Good evening. So first, the LCTA would like to extend, this is not gonna stay, extend our sincere thanks and gratitude to Chris and Alexis and Jenna and Janine and all the teachers who spent their summer to help make the summer school program a success for all of our students. So big thanks to them. With two weeks under our belt, we're back in the swing of things. And last week, William Street had their open house, where both, well, all three, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade welcomed parents for open house presentations. K-3 buildings will be this Thursday. And then we're rounding it out with middle school and high school over the next two weeks, where teachers and parents can meet to talk about curriculum. In addition to open house, some teachers at Como Park attended the Welcome Back Social last Friday evening. Our sports teams, our musical groups, our after-school clubs, those are in full swing at the middle school and the high school. Teachers will be chaperoning the back-to-school dance at the middle school and the courtyard dance at the high school later this month. And we must say that our Bill Spirit Days have taken on some new excitement as one of our own is now on the roster. The LCTA would also like to thank administration at the DO, as well as Carrie Green at Sholi for their support of the four teachers who worked on Friday, August 30th, to get their classrooms ready for arrival of students on September 2nd. So we really thank everyone for that. And finally, we are looking forward to assisting the PTO this month with their membership drives. And we thank them for all that they do for our students as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Farrar. And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substituted Teachers? 8.0, board reports. Do any board members have anything to report? And 9.0, superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Valley?
I think a combination of you and Mrs. Farrar. I think she stole my comments as she walked in. I must have dropped it on the aisle a little coming on. But honestly, thank you so much for your presentations and all the great work. And it's not just those things, but we're real proud here of having like a 99.5% graduation rate, which is, you know, that number means something for kids and their success. And it's those programs, those summer school programs, the lab program, the special ed teachers, you know, teachers throughout the school district, the support staff, the administration, anything else that make that happen. And this is just one great example of people doing great work during the summer in this particular case to make that happen for kids. And also, thank you to the Board of Education for supporting this program. Not every single school district has summer school in these ways that's unfettered and, you know, as far as numbers are concerned. If they come, we take care of them, and we'll do that. We've been doing that for many years. And that's something that this Board of Education has believed in for over a decade. And the results show themselves. So thanks again to everyone that did presentations and worked during the summer and worked to have that happen. And thank you for presenting again.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. 10.0, old business. Does anyone have any old business to discuss? 11.0, new business. 11.1, our personnel items. 11.1.1, can I have a motion on the personnel changes? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 11.1.2, can I have a motion on the tenure recommendation? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, can I have a motion on the Committee on Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 11.2.2, can I have a motion on the Committee on Preschool Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.0, business and financial items. 12.1, can I have a motion on the financial items? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.2 through 12.4 are for information only. They are Policy Second Readings. 12.2 is Policy Second Reading 6550, Leaves of Absence. 12.3 is Policy Second Reading 5681, School Safety Plans. And 12.4 is Policy Second Reading 5683, Evacuation, Lockdown, and Emergency Dismissal Drills. We will vote on those at a subsequent reading. 12.5, can I have a motion on the Food Service Department Operating Reports from July 2024? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.6, can I have a motion on the contract with Erie One Bosse's for room rental? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.7, can I have a motion on the contract with Erie One Bosse's for consultant services? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.8, can I have a motion on the contract with Buffalo Public Schools? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.9, can I have a motion on the construction change orders? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.10, can I have a motion on the contract with Rachel Steyer, Licensed Behavioral Analyst, P L L C? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? 12.11 is for information only. Tax tertiary settlement for 66 12.11 is for information only, tax tertiary settlement for 6647 Transit Road. 13.0 is our public hearing. We don't have anyone signed up to speak this evening. 14.0 is our executive session to discuss a matter in litigation with our district council. Before we go into executive session, which effectively ends the public portion of the meeting, I just want to mention that our next regular session is October 7, 2024, right here in the Lancaster High School Auditorium at 7:00 PM. All right, can I have a motion to go into executive session? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? All right, thank you all for coming out this evening.